Here.
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 A little delay to prove a little minute. We don't have a current copy with us in any right now. 1:45 is our public hearing to close out CBDG, you can find it in public comments between now and then, I think. The board is okay with that? So we'll begin with public comments, two minutes. State your name and your township, please. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Board. Charles Finley. I reside at 8191 Kane Lake Road in Plainfield Township, Michigan. I'm also the Deputy Fire Chief for the South Branch Fire Department in Gudara Township. Also County Commissioner in Iosco County in District Three. The reason I'm speaking to you today is I've had ongoing conversations with your EMS Director, Mr. Rice, about a mutual aid or service agreement for medical response unit up in the Curtisville area. I had drawn up a mutual aid agreement. We have mutual aid agreements with Curtisville right now for fire. And we were looking to get a mutual aid agreement or a service agreement with Alcona County EMS. I made the necessary changes that he wanted as far as the mutual aid agreement, because it would be strictly a first response unit, non-transport is what we do. And some of that to him, had not heard back from him, you know, on that. Received phone calls. We have some of our members that are on our department that reside in Alcona County. I revised another letter and a service agreement with Alcona County EMS. See if he was comfortable with that. I was advised that that letter was forwarded to the Board for, you know, for review. If you have any questions on it, you know, I am here. The reason, I'll just cut right to the chase on it, is this. We're not going to charge the county or the township for that medical first response unit. We have been called out by request of your crews on that side. Iosco County faces the same difficulties you are with EMS with people. But time saves lives. And we would respond with our medical first response unit at no cost to EMS, because Alcona Fire Department, you know, helps us, we help them back. We're all in the same boat here, it's about saving lives. We know that you've had to shut down your station number two on a, you know, on a different occasion where we could come up and at least stabilize that patient until mutual aid or transport unit could, you know, could get there. Also, if there was a mass casualty and you needed extra medical personnel, we would come over there. We currently have mutual aid contracts with, yes, I help you, you help me. Basically, all it is, is that with every single fire department in Iosco County, we're part of that association. Currently have medical mutual aid agreement with Oskota County, because they're so far away from a mentor township in that area over there to go up and give them a hand. And also, we have the capabilities of ORB rescue, which has a small set of draws on it, I think, that nature. So we're not here to take anything over. We're just here to help people, save lives. My mother passed away because no one knew CPR, there was no AED available. I've been up here and volunteered my time for community CPR training up here. My wife, just keep her completely out of this. She does work for the county, been with you folks for twenty, you know, twenty years. I have EMS and fire background for over thirty years. So we just want to help you. That's it. We just want to help you, we see the need up there. We just want to help, but we're not making any headway with this over here. So when your crews do have a cardiac arrest, you know, the crews actually call us. We're not going to turn anybody down, but we go respond as a fire department. Well, five hundred dollars a call is our policy when we go up. We have not passed any of that on. We just need, it's basically just a handshake. It's already been set up with our dispatch in Ogumah County. It has, your dispatch is ready to go. All they have to do is call Ogumah County. We recently upgraded through a grant our 800 radios and had your EMS and central dispatch put in, in all of our units. We are licensed by the state of Michigan in both Ogumah and Iosco County. And again, the bottom line is, we're not, we just want to, we just want to help. That's it. And we're just looking for, we are ready to go and we haven't heard anything back. That's why I am here today. We do have folks that live on your county line. I apologize to go over the three minutes here. One nice thing is, we do have folks that are medically trained that live on your county line. One on 65 and then one on county line road. And those folks there all carry medical equipment and AEDs, which are the automatic external defibrillators in their vehicles. So as a CPR instructor myself, if we can get somebody on scenes doing CPR with an AED, the chances of survival increase by three times. I know you had two cardiac arrests at the Alcona campground where I camp, you know, also. And your crews, nothing, you guys are stretched in just like everybody else. So when your crew is sitting and limping or coming back from Alpena, at least we can get it in there and stabilize it. The only thing that we ask is the same thing with, like, Oskota or Ogumah. If we use a bag valve mask, if you just replace that for us, if you can't afford it, we're good with that. We just don't, we just don't want to see anybody die. That's it. I appreciate your time.
Do you, did you schedule off just after the meeting? We're meeting, actually, we're having EMS meetings right after the meeting today. Do you have some time to stick around on top of this?
I guess so, what time would that be?
Whenever we're done here.
Yeah, I would, I would very appreciate that.
Yeah, we're actually meeting right after this meeting today. So if you, if your schedule allows, we'd love to talk to you then.
My meeting's all done.
Okay, great.
So I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
You're the part.
Yes, ma'am.
Next for public comment. Over here.
Sharon Saretta, I live in Harrisville Township, 7585 Ellen Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank Craig Johnston for returning my phone call really promptly, within an hour. We had a good conversation on Saturday and my concerns were regarding what happened at the ACCOA meeting. I was unable to attend that particular meeting because I was having oral surgery with four teeth removed. However, I would like to say now that I am in support of the community hub and some affordable housing based on what the money would grant. And I do have other concerns, but those concerns, I understand, are best addressed to whomever the new board is, which has not been published except in Alcona Review today. It is not on their Facebook site, as of last night anyway, as to who each person is that has concerns. So thank you very much.
You sound better today.
And I appreciate that. And I've always appreciated Carolyn Brown, even though I don't live in Grebes, but anyway.
Thank you. Anybody else who can public comment? Yes?
Patty Thomas, Harrisville Township. I'm, this may be too soon for you to answer this question, but in the last meeting, I think there was some discussion about AEDs. And I'm wondering if you guys have any count of how many there are currently? I know they're getting two new ones. And will there be an opportunity for public training for anybody that's interested in learning how to use a defibrillator and save a life?
If you reach out to EMS Director, that'd be nice to be able to.
When you have your meeting today, would you pass on that information of concerns about having brain?
Thank you. Please. Oh, no? Okay.
I was just scooping back up.
Okay. You looked like you were getting upset.
Yeah, I was trying to get out of the way.
Anybody else public comment? Nobody in house? Anybody online, public comment?
Yes, I do. Tim Goffey, Caledonia Township.
Go ahead, sir.
I would like to make a point of clarification about comments made by Ms. Epsy at last month's meeting regarding the statement that she made that I and Mike Brady made some false comments because in her words, that we do not have wetland violations and we do not have litigation with the properties that the grants have been applied for. Because that statement that she made is exactly the opposite of what is true. And the statement that I made was that we do have litigation pending with wetland property. And we do have zoning ordinance property violation that is still going to be further looked into regarding some of the properties listed on the DNR grants. So I guess if you bend the truth a little bit, it comes out the way that you want it to. So just to clarify, there is litigation pending on the wetland property and there is a zoning ordinance violation on the DNR grant property. So the letter that she asked for your support on the grants, I hope you still have not made any comments back to Caledonia Township on it. Thank you for your time, lady and gentleman.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else public comment?
Yeah, this is Mike Brady from Caledonia Township.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I just jumped on real late. Yeah, I kind of wanted to tag on with some comments the supervisors are made. There still is ongoing litigation at the Holcombe Creek property that has not been signed. The orders have not been signed by the judge. So for anyone to say our statements were false or my statements were false, that's incorrect. I don't appreciate being called by name and basically being called a liar to this fine group of people. I appreciate you taking the time and everybody try to stay warm out there, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Pam McKinnon, Caledonia Township. I was under the impression, sitting through with the litigation process of the Holcombe Creek property, that the judge had made her decision. The final things have not been presented as far as getting signs up and things like that, but I think his comment might be a little misleading. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, hello?
Sure.
Yeah, hi. Jennifer Stansik, Spruce, Michigan?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment about the ACCA Board. I'm a new resident as of July and attended that five-hour meeting. And it's fairly clear to me after that meeting and subsequent meetings that the only way for that board to move forward is for you to step in and remove what's left of the existing board. I had thought about running for the board, but on the day that people resigned, they already had three additional board members' applications, which seems odd since they were unaware of people resigning. There's so much malice and misinformation that the only way for them to move forward is for you guys to step in. And I'll be incredibly disappointed if they move forward with applications that they didn't ask for publicly and, you know, seem to be just pushing through their own agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Lisa Turner, Harrisville Township. I just wanted to say that there is an ad in the paper right now for board openings. However, it was put under "Help Wanted" instead of an actual ad. So I have a call in to John to have him change that and it is in the paper for four weeks. So there is an ad for people to put all their resumes and letters of intent into the board opening. It is in the paper now, but it's under "Help Wanted", and it, but I will have it changed today so that it reads like a regular ad and it'll be in for the next three weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of clarification. It was known amongst the board members at ACCOA that there was a resignation that want, they did know of one resignation that was going to take place at that meeting. And so therefore, other people who knew there would be a position opening had been submitting their letters of interest. So that's all that was, is, you know, and they are advertising and they will follow their bylaws for replacing board members.
Okay, your name and township.
Judy French, Harrisville.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a point of clarification, I guess.
I'm sorry.
Is there then a deadline for applications?
Miss Stansik.
Before they appoint new board members?
You get one shot at public comment. There's not, it's not answered, question, it's not answered, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Jerry Saretta, Harrisville Township. I taught up here for thirty years. Just a point on public discourse and comments like this, they're generally very, very good. Everyone gets to hear their viewpoint, but sometimes that turns into seeds of discontent. Sometimes it goes where it should not go. And I just would like people to be aware and listen and fact-check things that are brought out. We talked about things that are hearsay, we talked about things that are real. Please, don't get distracted by those who want to sow the seeds of discontent. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to go into our... I think, is there anyone more public comment? Okay, let's go into our CBDG grant public hearing, please. Carolyn, do you want?
In 2020, at the beginning of COVID, I know it's beginning, one of the number of things that did happen was that we were awarded, Alcona County was awarded a grant for 42,000, sorry, $143,300. The purpose of that grant was to provide protective things for the county. This 143 is part of what came for the masks, for the hand sanitizer, for the plexiglass, for all of those types of things that went up very quickly when COVID hit, shortly after COVID hit. In nineteen, I'm sorry, 2021, we had a, in essence, a hearing type thing because we were unable, tried as we did, we were unable to use the whole 143,000. We submitted a number of things and they were rejected and we did not spend $5,000 of it. So our award ended up being $138,792.77. At this time, we hoped to, the purpose of the public hearings to close out that grant period and acknowledge that we did in fact spend $138,792.77.
Do we need to have any kind of closing here? Take it out, think we have minutes, we're good?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Excellent. If I close that out then?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Let's, let's do a few minutes.
How about you have a crack one?
I'm going to say what I'm going to give you, man.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Here we go.
Thank you.
No, this is wrong. This is an implication given by Lady Avery. That's not right.
Well, Dave's in the first motion, so.
You're a lot cutting people.
No, I got it, I get it. That's the only thing I see.
So approval of that change?
Approval of the change, who gave the implication?
You.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to those. That's second with the change. Move to second it. All those favorites? All those opposed? Motion carries. Let me get to launch straight into the claims. I'll make a motion to approve three authorized claims and open claims within the payment between 118/2023 and 131/2023 for check numbers 149726 to 149834 and E-check numbers 2037 to 2044 for a grand total of $485,399. Second it? Move to second it. Any comments, questions? Hearing done, we'll take a roll call, please.
Small?
Yes.
Brummond?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, Curtis Township Solar Energy Ordinance. White ordinance and short-term rental ordinance. If the representative for that township wishes, we can kind of bonus today. If not, then it will be the regular 30-day period and it's automatically approved. Or 30 days, okay? So everybody take note of that. If anything, we now in the next 30 days, find something that you don't like, let us know. And then the third item under new business, we're striking from the record, we're not doing that today. Not striking from the record, but we're not doing it.
That would be done upon what, I think?
I just wanted to, that that was approved during the committee assignment appointments, then?
Could have been.
Okay.
Moving into finance report. Still trying to clean up leftover expenditures from 2022 to get the books all balanced out. Soon, that should be coming to an end here pretty quick. Other than that, no real things to report in finance. Moving on to personnel. Personnel report. Okay, so I sent everybody there about something we brought up, we've been discussing. I mean, if everybody got a hard copy of that? Do they want a hard copy? Anybody do you want?
Red.
Okay.
What is it?
So I'll read through it and then if we have any questions, hopefully everybody had the time to come up with a question. It says, "Proves letter of understanding with employees in equalization department. Personnel department or committee received a request from the equalization director to address a potential wage inequity concerning union employees. It is concerned that both employees receive the same additional compensation for the current LOU. The union supply proposed remedy for the inequity. There are currently two positions, appraiser and equalization assistant. The senior," there's a link, the senior, it's just an appraiser. "The senior appraiser position would continue with two levels and be titled appraiser and the equalization assistant would continue with two levels and be titled equalization assistant. As it currently stands, there's appraiser and equalization assistant, just those two positions." "The finance committee was sent to propose costs and asked about funding sources and below is a breakout and explanation." So we have underneath each of these, there's an appraiser with the MAAO certification, an appraiser with an MCAO certification, an equalization assistant with an MCAO, an equalization assistant with an MCAT, an MCAO certification. This point that the director made us aware of is that anybody working in that office has to have some sort of, at least a basic MCAT certification to even be employed in the office. That's, I guess, state law, is that correct, Rick? You can see the dollar amounts. We currently have an LOU for the $3,500 for both employees to have their wages increased from the base wage. And so the appraiser with the MAAO certification and the senior appraiser with an MCAO certification, the only position that would see an increase, which would go from $3,500 to $5,500 with the MCAO certification and from $3,500 to $7,500 with the MAAO certification. It's worth noting, as I wrote in here, as part of the requirements of the MAAO certification, the appraiser would have the ability to sign our actual and complete all the state required needs that our current director has to meet and be able to do that. So the appraiser has, the union position has agreed to a 90-day on-call period to sign any paperwork required by the state of Michigan if the director is unavailable or incapacitated. This would be the senior union position in the office. Reason, the benefit for the county in that position is, we did a little research on that. Several counties have faced this. You have to have a private company come in and sign your role. It's, there's anywhere from $15,000 to $25,000 for them to sign that. So we'd have someone on staff and we jokingly said if Troy got hit by a bus, and he got hit by a plane, what else did we do? Bus, plane, car accident. In any way, he was incapacitated, that position would, should be able to fulfill those requirements. Not in any way a new director or with any kind of management, only signing a paper, subsidiary union. Anything else there, anything you think?
You've done an excellent job.
Okay. So would we make a motion, while we did finance? I mean, I don't want to make a motion if finance doesn't have the capacity to do that. So if there's no, how the money's available or, I don't want, how do we open up for discussion? We'll make a motion to put this LOU into effect. It's not a good, second. Move to second. Now we discuss.
It almost appears to me that it would be the creation of a new position. And if that is true, then we need to either put it in the union or put it out of the union. That goes out of the union. Either way, we will need to interview and do a hiring process.
So we did talk about that. So that this, in some departments, it would be an assistant equalization director, which would be a non-union position. But with that, that person would step into the director's position and assume all management also. What we're asking this person to do would have nothing to do with management. It would simply be taking advantage of the MAAO certification.
Well, to agree, it does have to be, but from the standpoint that, if Troy's signing, nothing, you know.
No, no, this isn't a screw-up. This is only if he's not able to sign it.
Right. But, but move back step. And let's say that for some reason, not that he ever would, he makes mistakes. He is responsible.
Correct.
Now, it falls back on us a little bit. But nonetheless, you'd have the same thing if you have somebody else signing.
That's correct. Whether it's the, whether it's one of our union employees or whether it's a guy we hired from Rother City, he's signing his name, he would charge us $20,000 to do it. We've got our, we've got an appraiser who says that they can, they will have the capacity to sign it and already be familiar with the data, so. We've got our, we've got an appraiser who says that they can, they will have the capacity to sign it and already be familiar with the data, so.
I, I feel that it opens up a new position. That then requires just a different decision, is that switching to union or non-union, and if it's non-union. Either way, we need to.
So, that, I, I see what you're saying, but it, she would not change any, yeah, it's, it's interesting. Yeah.
Well, isn't right now, they, they get, all it's doing is increasing what, they get, these certifications are just increasing.
Dollar amounts, yes. Uh, so in order, it was the personnel department, or the personnel committees thought that if, for, uh, for, no better way to explain it than for the county to get something out of this in order to increase the amount, we would like to take advantage of utilizing that MAAO certification, and if the employee was willing to do that, and as she has contacted the union, and she's also contacted private entities, that's not a problem, she can do that without being a director. That can be done, so we, it, it gives us the opportunity to perhaps save twenty thousand dollars, if it happens.
I just, I just don't, it doesn't have a problem with tacking that much dollars, all you want. I, I agree, if that, I don't, I'm not minimizing that at all, but, um, how much would you pay a thousand dollars to pay the rest of you?
Well, so I don't think when, in our discussions, it wasn't about just that benefit. That was a side benefit. In fact, that never came, the rest of it was, so.
An increase in pay.
An increase in pay. So, as we looked at the LOU, it's been thirty-five hundred dollars for both employees for many years. And, uh, there seems to be an issue.
I, I'd like to question that a little bit. I believe it would kind of, they both reached the same level, and for that reason, it rolled into the higher amount.
I don't think it was levels, I think it was certifications. So, once they both reached MCAO.
Right.
So, what this really does is it takes out, it, it sort of addresses the position, not the certification.
It addresses seniority.
Yes, that's, that's a fair, yeah. So, we have a senior employee.
It addresses seniority.
Who is getting the same increase.
So, do we then need to go to other departments and for the senior person raise them?
Only if they are required by law to meet these extra certifications. That would be a fair, I would say, fair.
She has people in her office, if, if Cheryl were here, she has people in her office who have certification, who have done through schools, et cetera. Sometimes online, sometimes they go to the school. And, and they have additional things that without that, her office would not, that section of her office wouldn't function. But it functions because those people have done the training, have gone to school, whatever it may be. So, why, I would have to go to her office and say, "Here, you've got the certification, I need to give you more money," and I, I, I can't follow that. And when it's really nothing.
So, here's where we end up this experience, you know, we always get to this point.
We're short-lived.
Um, you're, the, the reality is, you're paying for the certification. There is a small.
Well, we're already paying for certification.
Right. So, we are increasing the amount because we, as the personnel committee, we felt like the value of the certification has increased with the market, with what it's being paid for and what it costs to get these done. So, if we were to, again, hire the private company to come in and take over that position, we are looking at a tremendous amount of money compared to what we pay. So, we've, we've decided, we have, I guess, we're recommending, we've recommended that we, we recognize the increased value of these certifications and raise the pay accordingly.
I follow you. But, I will consider that after we've gone to all the other offices and seen where they have been elevated and figure out how we're going to pay them.
Just sure we call for a word.
Part?
More special. Call for, I'm asking for a word. Does anybody else? Dave, you ready?
You can't, once the motion's called, you can't. Sorry about that.
Okay, then, uh.
It was a good discussion.
Roll call is?
Brummond?
No.
Brady?
Yes.
Small?
Yes.
Gutz?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Another one to four.
Motion carries. Uh, we'll discuss, and to understand this is going to affect until February, or end of February?
Uh, it's going to affect minutely on one portion, because the employee currently has, uh, the MCAO currently. Um, and then the MCAO.
How long does the certification take?
I think, uh, February.
It's a little fine, we, you know, part of the, okay, well, I mean, right now, there's going to be money in there, obviously, because we start, uh, here, but let's get it figured out. Okay, that's it. Anything else in personnel?
Um... No, I, I don't, I don't think there is. We've got some time, so you guys can think of anything else.
Okay. Uh, Treasure is not here today. She's at a conference, going, uh, more educated about what she does for us. Moving on to the clerk's report.
There's nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Well, then. Just scream around. Jake's in, I don't know. Uh, communications in your packet for your, uh, boozle, unless anybody feels necessary to break this something up now?
I would like to, uh, I think you all got a copy of the notification, right? Uh, I would like to ask that, that our next meeting, that the extension of the state of Michigan release be placed on that, um.
Business?
Yeah, on that, um, agenda.
It should be for Harbertown, Harbertown, uh.
Yeah. And it increases by just under a thousand dollars.
What?
At least.
Oh, the rentals?
Yeah. That's what we located five years ago. I'd say the five years come and go, but.
Five years, maybe? Since that office has been in there? That's insane.
Do we do it right now, or could we have?
We can do it.
Uh, let's put it, let's put it in a next one.
Yeah, we just. Although they do ask for a, um, the other one, they do, I didn't bring it, they, they ask to speed it up, but I'll do, they'll be happy if we do it.
Probably have it by the fifteenth. Okay, committee reports. Terry? I'm sick of my voice. Anything drastic or di, and not, you don't have to say a lot of words, but is there anything bad or dire going on with the dams right now?
Um... Like, it's in the middle of a, I'm going to call it a negotiation, information out there, consumers is, uh, giving some information out. They're going to be public, yeah, I understand. It is a long, long process.
Dave?
Um, just, uh, we're going ahead, building department, we're doing a couple, uh, little repairs, but getting ready for the veterans administration to move in with, uh, into the building department temporarily. And that looks like it's on schedule for probably around February fifteenth.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
Greg?
Yeah, um, Veterans Affairs. Is that still in here?
Just stepped out.
Anybody else got a copy of what I sent out? Thank you. I don't know where it went, so. So, uh, we've been in, uh, discussions with the Veterans, uh, Veterans Affairs Board, and as a Veterans Officer, I asked Dave, Gutz, to help me, so we've been able to meet with them, put another set of eyes on this and start getting it along. I've sent it out to everyone. If you'd like me to read this report so the public knows, is that fine, or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the Vetra, uh, I've invited, I identified eight different bullet points. It said the Veterans Board identified, and this is the beginning of this. Veterans Board has identified a need for increased space, the lack of privacy has caused some veterans to not want to come into the office, causing the service officer to have to leave the office to serve as a veteran. There is also a need for increased foot traffic, as evidenced by the increased benefits obtained by veterans in the community. Number two, the veterans are directed to get prints on a site plan of their proposed building through an advertised bid process identified Tom Jacobs as a contractor for the building. The Veterans Board then applied for a state grant, which the Board of Commissioners signed, naming Jacobs Builders as the builder, and received a fifty thousand dollar grant. Jacobs has worked with the veterans over the last several months, advising them on the steps needed to complete the project, uh, and assent certified site plan, prints, executing proposals, well, and zoning laws. Number three, the Lincoln DDA agreed to de-property the county for construction of the building. The Board of Commissioners agreed to receive the property contingent upon zoning approval, well availability, and no contamination. Uh, the current property, two twenty-two Second Street, I think that was kind of cool, and you can read that, two twenty-two Second Street, has no known contamination, this is my investigation and my calls, the calls that I made, uh, is confirmed by Eagle. A proposal for a phase one assessment has been received and could be completed in two to three weeks if the Board of Commission deems it necessary. So, uh, there's a company in Gaylord that could do this on pretty short notice, uh, this would be a phase one, uh, price around fifteen to nineteen hundred dollars. Uh, this assessment is not required by Eagle, there is no contamination on the site, there's no history of a contamination. However, given the commercial nature of the area, Board of Commissioners may require it as a final step before transfer. Number four, a certified site plan will presented, be presented to the village zoning board for approval on two twenty twenty-three. And I don't know if everybody had a copy of this, but this is the certified site plan, so I think everybody had a chance. Um, so then on the twentieth of February, that'll get, uh, approved by zoning. Uh, zoning administrators indicated there wouldn't be an issue, so hopefully that'll get done. Uh, the Department of Health has been contacted, indicated that a well can be located on the site, it'll be a type-three public well. Uh, recent nearby wells indicated depth of one hundred twenty-five to one hundred thirty-five feet. Several verbal proposals for the well have been obtained on prices, um, I don't need to go into how much yet, so when it comes to it, we'll do it. Uh, number six, a certified blueprint of the commercial building is nearing completion at Russo and Associates. Once the project print is received and approved, the materials list can be compiled. The Veterans Board has indicated that several suppliers have expressed a willingness to reduce or donate services or goods to complete the project. Um, that is true, there's been, Home Depot has expressed some interest, they're getting donations, uh, several of them. I think I've had a lot, or had a lot of relations, probably, coming in for that, so appreciate that. Uh, number seven, John Hartley, our IT man, is compiling a list of technological, technology requirements, needs, and wants. Uh, so there, those are three different categories. As a county building, security will be at the same standard as the current building, our building here, and supervised by John Hartley. In addition, all required computer security features will be handled by Hartley. Uh, and then finally, by law, the Board of Commissioners are responsible and creates the Veterans Affairs budget. The approved budget line item for this project is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. The veterans believe they will stay within that budget. That's my report.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Carolyn?
Um, we've, Senator, Department of Board, um, we have our meeting this Friday. We will be approving the twenty twenty-one audit, so consent of the state, in accordance, uh, with our sympathy with this. We're pleased that the state of Michigan is willing to have us be on a biennial, uh, reporting, um, rather than year away. Um, MIBC, Michigan Intugent Defense Commission, the question's been raised again, as it is every year, do we want to merge with other counties? Um, the people involved with it here, at this, in Alcona, like it the way it is. They really don't want to have it merged, um, but the decision rests with us. My vote would be to leave status quo. Um, it will not cost us any difference if we were to change. We would be with Lurinsy and up here, county. I, I just feel wise to stay the way we are. Um, our administrator, Bill Pfeifer, believes that. And, um, I, you have, I don't think court's office has any reason to want us to change.
Yeah.
And, um, so if, or if you want to investigate that further, I would say no, or ask Stephanie to put it on, on next agenda. But I, I really do hope that we just leave it as it is. Um, Hunt's been busy, uh, we had our quarterly meeting, uh, they have, they were assisting, uh, as some of you are aware, but in activity, uh, within the county, there is recently. Quarterly meeting for the LHC and the LPT, um, are there, nothing from stereotype regarding the wells and so on? We used to get monthly reports, and then it went to kind of quarterly, and then kind of semi-anually, and we haven't had any simple, uh, polls, so. Next year, our dollar amount, um, is going to be eleven thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars. If you remember, you're all too young to remember, but anyway, it used to be the thirty, forty thousand dollars. So, my center, uh, welcome the new Secretary of Director, Madeline McConnell, at our board meeting at the end of January. There's discussion about changing the date of our meeting, but we'll see, nobody's created the sixth Wednesday of the month, and so, until we do, I think that's going to be that way. Um, thank you for your support on the closure of the grant that we did earlier. The opioid committee is scheduled for a meeting, uh, don't have the time on it yet, but it would be, um, either the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth of February. The check's in the mail, so I'm told, for fifty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, meaning fifteen cents, which is very cool. Um, we received notice that it is, that it is literally in the mail. And I'm very, very surprised because we believed it was coming via E-check, and, and Pnops does, so I didn't get, but it said mail. So, uh, we'll believe it when Cheryl realizes, however it gets to us. ACCOA has new officers, they're putting these in motion to elect the four remaining board members, and as was indicated, that ad is in the paper, that notice, I should say, not ad, notice is in the paper. Um, and they are welcoming any and all to apply and to submit their name. Um, if you know, our relationship with ACCOA is a, is to a contract for services, and we will confirm that those services are taking place this time in this fall. Northeast Michigan two-one-one quarterly meeting, because this month, uh, the executive committee meets monthly, but, uh, the full board meets quarterly. And we will be voting in and approving the, um, contract with the new Secretary of Director.
That was a good one. Okay, then, we are down to our last segment of public comment, five minutes per person, and then by you, yourself, and your work company. Yeah, we'll start over here.
Hi, Patrick Smiley, Alcona County Veterans Committee. Uh, I want to thank you guys for putting this together. Uh, it's pretty thorough, explains a lot. But one thing I just want to add, it was, the lack of privacy was a very main issue to our veterans, but also, uh, the central location. That's how we came up with Lincoln, it's centrally located in the county, and many veterans, especially coming from Glanny to Coroner, that's long ways to come into here, so that's how we came up with that. So, that's very important, too, that it's centrally located, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Left or right, who's next? Yes?
Hi, I'm Kelly Von Fennel, I'm from the city of Harrisville. Um, I, um, was a former member, I am a former member of the ACCOA, and regarding the comments being made about board involvement, um, with the current goings-on, um, complaints, many, many complaints were made, not only by myself, but other employees, a long time ago. And a lot of us, excuse me for being emotional, came to some members of the Board of Commissioners. Our requests and complaints fell what seemed like on deaf ears. So, now, when people are crying for the Board of Commissioners to step in, it feels like a big giant slap in the face if that were to happen, and I just wanted to make that known. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, my name's Rob Pellerito. I'm the new district director for Senator Michelle Plinga. Our office is now open in Lansing. I am in the district. Uh, I would gladly share my contact info. I have 16 counties, uh, from Eastern Manistee County up to Prescott and down to Northern Bay County, so, uh, I hope to be back and through Alcona County, uh, several times throughout the, the next few months, so any issues, please feel free to reach out to, to our office or myself directly and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Stay after a little bit? Yep. Public comment. Harry.
Gary Vanup Mitchell Township. Um, as far as the Board of Commissioners getting involved in ACCOA, I remember a resolution being written, asking the board to do so, and having. It seems now that we have a competent commissioner sitting on that board for a reason, and it's going the way it's going. I think it's just fine. Um, as far as the optics of, um, resumes being available, uh, it hasn't been made known, but on the 19th, when they had the previous meeting, I guess there were individuals there that were also there for that reason. And it seems that the nominating committee withdrew its, uh, proposal at the meeting of the 23rd, so I'm kind of wondering what that was about, but, you know, I am not privy to any of that. Um, I would like to admonish both the local news and the Alpena news for putting stuff in there that I think could be later on inflammatory, and I think they need to consider what they're doing when they put out their publications and bring forth news. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Martin Pincera, Haines Township. First of all, I want to thank you, everyone, working on the vets issues. I think that's very important. Uh, my father served in World War II, uh, Korean War, Vietnam. It's very important information, uh, process that we do, you know, for our vets. And I'm really glad to see that we, you know, make new commissions for them so that they have what this gentleman said, uh, privacy, location available to everybody. I just wish we could have used a, we use a building that we have, that's empty, but there may be certain qualifications that those look fit. Secondly, um, I was just wondering how we're doing with our internet capability in the county. Um, I've been kind of following along things that we've been doing. I'm really proud of us. Uh, I think there was a, a huge push to find out what all the lines that have been made, what they are, where they're going, and, um, so I'm inquiring about that also. And maybe at some point I can connect with.
I'm going to be after.
All right, I love that. Thank you. And lastly, about the ACCOA, um, terrible state of affairs, and, um, I don't see a lot of transparency today. Uh, is an example, two people in our, citizens in our community stood up and made, um, uh, what should be professional statements from an employee or a board member, but they didn't identify themselves. So, in doing so, you can understand why people, um, are remiss in trying to understand what they're trying to do out there. Uh, if they don't identify who they are when they're talking about business that is being, um, handled at ACCOA, then there is no transparency. And as far as who is, you know, checking out to make sure things are done, that's men's stuff. I understand the Board of County Commissioners don't really want to get involved. I think you're a little remiss in that. You should get involved at some point, um, who's watching what's happening. And, um, so I just want to reiterate, if the current board wants us to believe that they are truly working for all of the people in Alcona County, then if you have employees or people who speak or have been hired by the board and getting paid, then be transparent. Have those people say who they are, what is their position, and how, then we'll all understand what's going on, and we won't have this terrible, um, push and pull that's going on right now. We need to help Alcona County save this 12.5 million dollar gift that we've been given, and I think that we all need to work together on that and stop all this bickering, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. And yes, I'd love to talk to you after.
Thank you. Anybody else public comment? Anybody online public comment? Okay, commissioners, additional comments and concerns? Greg, get me, uh, inspiration to talk about air targets right now?
Uh, you know, I know, I know Robin, the Robin Grant has opened, I believe, Doug has told me this. Doug Chief, we're the chairman of the EDC Committee. Um, they are starting to look at potential people who will get the grant. Uh, I, I, it's, I, I think it's going to be one of those things where it's, the water is calm, and all of a sudden, things are going to happen. Uh, so, there's things going on behind the scenes and, and actions that are happening. Um, we haven't gotten any far, as far as I know, with Presque Alcoa and gas. They're in the process of coming up with some things. The grant's getting made available, stuff is happening. I, I, I wish I had more than that, but, you know.
Well, it's important to mention that, the.
Hasn't been forgotten.
No, I, I'm saying is everything is in line, and as soon as the grants start dropping, we're going to start having some progress.
We're, we're first, we're almost first in line.
Right.
And we, we've got a lot, all the groundwork done. You know, there's a lot of combs that are trying to catch up and do the mapping. Uh, Presque already has, uh, agreements with consumers to use their lines, um. And we've positioned ourselves really well to when the money starts becoming available, if, if we are in a good position to receive it, so.
And that's, I mean, that's not the grant, that's not the ARPA funds, that's the additional grants.
That's a digital grant, so there's a.
Yeah, there's millions of dollars out there.
200 million dollar for rural communities.
Right.
Yeah, a lot of money. There's a lot of federal money, there's a lot of money. So, as, as it becomes available and as the doors start opening, and our consultants and our people are opening, are walking through those doors, presenting our information, that's.
Yeah. Okay, I just thought that would be nice to everybody here, so. Anybody else additional comments? Okay, then we'll adjourn the meeting until February 15th.
Pat, if you want this and show anybody, you know, I got.
I've got it. You can.
Okay, if anybody wants to see this, it'll be up here. That's the, that means a bear of the building.